Everybody, and welcome. It is 6:30. We're in the Berlin Room of the Administration Building. And it's Thursday, January 10th. This is the Organization Meeting that will bring forward a number of things that the Board needs to do to set ourselves up for the 2019 year. And I'll point out as a reminder, with a 6:30 meeting start, that's going to be the standard for the rest of this year. So with that, the meeting is called to order. And Emily, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Mr. Bartz?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
And Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Thank you.
And you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yeah, I can see if I can.
Now we need a motion to approve the agenda for the Organization Meeting, please.
You email it.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And Emily, please.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you. And we are pleased now to present our election of officers for the coming year. After that, we will go through some Board items that need to be approved, and then immediately follow this meeting. Immediately following this meeting will be the regular business meeting. So with that, I'm pleased to present the election of officers. So do we have a motion, please, for the Office of President for 2019?
I'll nominate Kevin O'Brien.
And any other nominations? With that, we'll close with nominations, with a motion to close the nominations, please.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Emily, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. So we have a vote now on that nomination, so would somebody please make a motion to approve the election of Mr. O'Brien, please?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
And Emily, if you would, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. So if you would, Emily and Mr. O'Brien, join in the front for the swearing-in of the office.
Do you have to come right in front of where you were?
No.
We need to say the oath in seconds and have you repeat after. So please, ring your hand. I, please state my...
Aye, Kevin O'Brien.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
And I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge my duties...
Discharge my duties.
As President of the Board of Education...
As President of the Board of Education.
In and for the said...
In and for the said.
Olentangie Local School District in Delaware County, Ohio.
Olentangie Local School District in Delaware County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect...
In accordance with the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted...
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office...
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. And I will sign.
Seems longer than yours. I don't know.
I know. That is...
It is. That is crazy.
Yeah. I'm sure it's wrong.
Is that another unfunded governmental nominee?
The vote to nominate. Vote to close.
Thank you.
Like I said, I just think it was...
It is. It's a good choice.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. All right, so do we have a nomination for Vice President, please?
Do I nominate Ms. Mindy Patrick?
And are there any other nominations? Can we have a motion, please, and a second to close the nominations for Vice President?
So moved.
Seconded.
Emily, please. Did you get that, Roger?
Okay.
I just want to make sure she got you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
So would somebody please make a motion to approve the nomination of Mrs. Patrick for Vice President?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
And if you would call the roll?
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if you will join Emily for the oath of office, please.
Please raise your hand and repeat after. Please, I state your name.
I'm Mindy Patrick.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge my duties...
Discharge my duties.
As Vice President of the Board of Education...
As Vice President of the Board of Education.
In and for the said...
In and for the said?
Yes. Olentangie Local School District in Delaware County, Ohio.
Olentangie Local School District in Delaware, Ohio.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with laws now in effect...
And accordance with laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted...
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office...
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Do you want to sign the oath? Please. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you and congratulations, Mindy. I have items for Board action items to approve as a group, A through L. Before we take a vote on that, I'm just going to highlight them instead of reading them all verbatim. The first one is A, schedule Board meetings. I think we've all gone through the calendar, and there are no more changes on that. Okay, B is establish our Board committees from continuation of previous years. Any changes to that, any other suggestions? Okay? And then C is the Board Liaisons and Committees, and I'm going to read those for the benefit of our audience. For the Facilities Committee, the Board Liaisons to that, and again, these are Board Committees, will continue to be Roger and myself. The Finance and Audit Committee will be myself and Kevin. The Policy Committee will be Roger and Mindy. And the School Advocacy Committee will be Julie and Mindy. Our Regional Assignments, as they call it, for the Ohio School Boards Association, the Student Achievement Representative would be Mindy. I'll be the delegate. Mindy would be the alternate delegate, and Julie again would be the legal representative. Item D is to appoint the district organizations for the districts. That's the different PTOs, et cetera. E is appoint Board Member Julie Feasel to serve on the Delaware Area Career Center Board for a three-year term effective this January 1st. Item F is to establish the Board Service Fund. This is funds for expenses that the Board might incur in the performance of our duties. G is the approval membership of the School Board Association for 2019. We've been members for many years. Approve our membership likewise in the Meta, M-E-T-A, solutions for 2019. There's no cost to the district to do that. And then an I is approve the Treasurer Action Authorization for 2019. J is approve the Superintendent Authorizations for 19. K is approve Purchasing Agent for 2019, which would be Jeff, Director of Business and Facilities. And lastly, L is to approve the Director of Business and Facilities Authorization likewise for 2019. Again, the Director of Business and Facilities. So with that, unless there's a question or somebody wants to make a revision of a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, please?
I'll second. Go ahead. I'll second. Mindy can.
And Emily, if you take the roll?
Absolutely. Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes, thank you. And last item is the adjournment of the Organization Meeting, so if you have a motion, a second, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Emily, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Thank you.
All right, so it is now 6:40, and I'll call to order the Business Meeting, which is following the Organization Meeting. Again, today is Thursday, January 10th. It's 6:40 PM. We are in the Olentangie Administrative Offices in the Berlin Room. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Bartz?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Still here.
Mr. King?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here. Again, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Where is that the class meeting?
Yes, now I want to see the organization. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I was so excited. We had a lot of people here. I don't think we should dismiss them.
That's a short...
I think they're getting some...
Well, they've been here since 4 o'clock.
They're getting their degree. Administrative licenses, is that what they're doing?
Superintendents. We run a cohort...
Iron Nose, who left early. Petition for Mr. Rick's job. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to move the agenda as written.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I've got Board Presidents' Report. I've just got a few comments, and really just some brief thoughts and priorities, maybe for 2019. These are kind of my comments. Certainly welcome the input of the rest of the Board as we kind of progress through the year. Kind of put them in three broad categories. One is funding. I know the Board will be spending a fair amount of time and energy thinking through different funding strategies, albeit whether it's a levy strategy or working with the state and our state legislature on our fair funding effort. Certainly, if you noticed, most probably didn't, but if you look at the organizational meeting and the Board Service Fund, we actually increased the amount that we chose to spend in 2019. And what we're really trying to do is not just talk about doing more to push forward fair funding, but probably invest some dollars in doing more to facilitate our efforts around fair funding. So that, I think, will be certainly a top priority for the Board as we get into 2019 and start thinking about 2020. Second is growth, in two ways. How are we managing the growth? And I think as Dr. Lucas used to say, how do we get big but stay small at the same time and still have that great experience for the students and the staff as we continue to be large, but not lose that small feeling? Which kind of goes into the third piece, which is kind of the experience of the brand. I know we spent a fair amount of time this year on the brand. I know the Board all participated in some work sessions. We're kind of excited to see the output of that, and that'll be a big deliverable in 2019. And I'll back a little bit on growth, because Dave, I know you wanted a few minutes to talk about the Facilities Committee last night, so why don't you go ahead?
Once in a while, you get these meetings that are just over-the-top, excellent meetings, and last night was one of those with the Facilities Committee. It was an excellent discussion about growth, especially at the middle school level. Bill Waterfield was there, and he presented information about the current population of all of the middle schools and what's anticipated over time. Of course, Emily and Jack are there, as they've been going for some time now. It was a great discussion. Almost the entire meeting was just dealing with that subject, especially in this case last night at the middle school level. What comes out of that group is exceptional. The data that comes in, the inner dialogue between the volunteers and our administrators, and the information that comes out in terms of reports to the Board is excellent. It just amazes me how professional that is. If they incorporated themselves, they could make a lot of money working for a lot of school districts, there's no question about that. And we're getting that service from excellent people at no cost to the district. So it was just a great discussion. Thanks.
All right. So again, just to recap, priorities for the Board, we're really going to be focused around funding, growth, and the experience, and we're certainly excited to get 2019 underway. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Rafe for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we too are looking forward to a great 2019. So those priorities are exactly what we're working on all the time. So with that, I've got a lot of positive slides about living our mission. The first is we had State Board of Education recently recognize 28 districts and 310 schools for earning overall grade of A in the 2017 AT report card. Although as a district we did, we were a B overall. We had nine of our schools earn that overall grade of A. Those schools were Freedom Trail Elementary, Indian Springs Elementary, Olentangie High School, Liberty High School, Olentangie Meadows Elementary, Orange High School, Tyler Run Elementary, Walnut Creek, and Wyandotte Run Elementary School. So congratulations to those schools. And then additionally, the state designated two of our schools earned the state's Momentum Award, which recognizes schools for exceeding expectations in student growth. And we had two, those, they must, schools must earn As on all value-added measures on the report card, and must have at least two value-added subgroups of students, which includes gifted, lowest 20% achievement, and students with disabilities. So those two schools were Tyler Run Elementary School and Wyandotte Run Elementary School. So congratulations for that. Just want to highlight an excellent program being sponsored by our Parent Programs Teams. It's called Operation Street Smart Drug Education. It is run by the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, and they bring in just a tremendous team of presenters and present, as it says here, arm the parents, teachers, and community members with information necessary to recognize the influences of the drug culture in their children and familiarize them with the drugs children face. You know, the kids unfortunately are far more knowledgeable about this topic than we are as adults, so I highly encourage attendance at 6:00 PM on Thursday, January 17th at Shanahan Middle School. So it's a, just a great, it's going to be, it's a great program. Next, we have, I'm sure you've seen us blastin' this out all over the place. I'm waiting to see if Mrs. Patrick's going to pay attention.
I was putting it on my calendar.
She's posting while you're talking.
I was not posting.
This is certainly near and dear to her heart. I want to compliment Mr. Fetty and Mr. Argonbright, or excuse me, Dr. Fetty and Mr. Argonbright for their work on this area. We are the first public school district in the nation to have earned Orton-Gillingham accreditation. And as you've heard many times, Orton-Gillingham is a structured, multi-sensory language approach for students identified with dyslexia, and that accreditation is a result of our teachers completing in-depth self-study. And currently, we have more than 700 students in the district receiving Orton-Gillingham instruction. So this remains a high priority for us as we continue to move forward to better serve our students with dyslexia. So I want to, you know, obviously, this is something near and dear to Mrs. Patrick's heart, and she's been a huge supporter of that.
But can I just say, we're doing what colleges of education are not?
Yes.
It's a pretty big deal. Okay.
It is. It is. The next thing I want to highlight, I hope all of you had the time, and I want to keep bringing this forefront, the This Week News did a great job in their 2019 article. It goes along with what Mr. O'Brien mentioned with in terms of our growth and managing our growth. So we're trying to be as proactive as possible in terms of sharing our information with the community about our projected student population and the growth in our district and the need for additional, potentially need for additional schools in the future. So I'm going to keep blasting that information out. You know, I'm sure somebody will ask in the future and say, "You never told us we were growing." But you just cannot drive around here and not realize that more people are coming to Delaware County and especially Olentangie. So last Friday night, we had an exciting night at Olentangie High School. They had their Hall of Fame inductions, and inducted into that Hall of Fame, as you go across the picture from left to right, is Joshua Perry, who is a football player and track athlete at Olentangie. Also obviously played at Ohio State and professionally. Kyle Morris is a professional golfer. He was an All-State golfer at Olentangie. Ryan Mead was the State Baseball Player of the Year on a state runner-up team in 2006. In the middle is Zach Karan, who just completed a season with the Washington Redskins. Has played with three or four professional teams. And then next to Zach is Phyllis Hess, who was a longtime booster at Olentangie. She ran the Booster Club. She did the announcing for the football and basketball games for 25 years. So thanked her. Next to her is Dora Domato, who...
Yes.
Yeah. It just was a great night. Dora Domato was the cheerleading coach at Olentangie High School for 27 years. I think Liberty's been open for what now 15 years, and we've had 18 cheerleading coaches.
Yeah.
So Dora did it for 27 years. That says a lot about what a special person she is. Next to Dora is Tuck Blackstone, and Tuck was a basketball player at Olentangie, former teammate of Mr. Feesel's. Next to Tuck is Chad Barson, who was an All-State Soccer Player, State Soccer Player of the Year, played at Akron, was on a national championship soccer team at Akron, and played professionally for the Crew. And then next to, lastly, is Kenny, Anna, Nikki. And Kenny played football and basketball and track at Olentangie, and was also, went to Duke, got two degrees from Duke as undergrad and masters, and then played professionally with the Broncos and the Jets, and was on the Super Bowl LV championship team. So it was just a, it was a great night. And give credit to the staff at Olentangie for the work they did to put that all together. Packed house and good night. And then lastly, I just want to highlight two action items. We have for you the approval of two, from state security, additional security cameras district-wide. This is part of our ongoing capital improvement efforts. It was great to have Joe involved in this vetting of this purchase and what we're doing with the additional security cameras district-wide. And then we have on here the approval of school bus purchases from Rush Trucking as part of our Meta bid package for $1,081,704 for 12 buses. So as part of our bus replacement program. And then lastly, our important dates coming up. First semester, second quarter report cards will be available to the public January 11th. We do not have school in January 21st for MLK Day. And then our next Board meeting, which will be a packed agenda. Early highlights include a state of the schools update. Our next Board meeting is January 24th. So with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
I'll let you sit down, and then you can present your Superintendent action items if you're ready.
You don't have a treasurer's report?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped. Wow. Jumped. All right, Ms. Hatfield, treasurer's report, please.
If you have it, sir.
Sorry. Got ahead of myself.
You're acting like me, Kevin.
I'd like to withdraw my nomination with my approval vote.
Mr. Wright's out of town, and he's typically the one who's critical of any mistake, so you're safe. He's so...
I'm sure he'll text us and let us know.
No, I won't. I draw.
Well, good evening. I don't have a PowerPoint for you this evening, but I did want to highlight some items that have been going on in the treasurer's office and give you guys some information that is now available for our district. A lot of this information was summarized in the last memo that I sent to the Board, but I wanted to just reiterate some of those points for our audience in general. One of the first items that we would like to point out is our open enrollment process. Our open enrollment for health insurance with our staff is closed. It closed as of November 21st, and we did see significant movement from the PPO plan to the high deductible plan, which was part of the goal. We will go through more specific of those numbers as we move towards the budgeting project and give you that data detail. We also have our tax year 2018 effective tax rates. We have our initial estimates from Delaware County on that. Our debt millage or effective millage rate will remain at 7.5 mils, and we saw a slight decrease in our operating millage. But overall, fairly close to where we were for 2017. So what does that mean to our community? In terms of the cost of tax dollars per $100,000 valuation for our residents, it's a slight decrease of less than $4 to our residents per $100,000 valuation. So a good model of making sure that we're effectively collecting the tax money and the tax dollars that we have voted out there in the community. As a reminder of how those collections work, tax year 2018 will be collected in two halves. We will receive half of it in January and February, and the second half of those taxes in July and August, which will affect this fiscal year and fiscal year '20 when we're looking at the five-year forecast. The fiscal year 2018 Cup Report has been released by the Ohio Department of Education. That Cup Report is based upon, of course, fiscal '18's data. It is a cumulative report that puts comparative data about cost per pupil expenditures, costs for personnel percentages, and benefits percentages for not just Olentangie, but for every public school district in the State of Ohio. Our expenditure per pupil is $11,007. This is an increase over last year, however, it's only $462, and we are still well below the state average of $11,953, and we're still under the average for our comparable districts at $11,832. So while there was a rising cost factor, it's an inflationary factor that is out there in the market, and we're still under the state average and our comparative grouping average. So that's great news to share with the community at large. Of course, our department is going through calendar year processing, so our staff will be able to receive their W-2s and 1095 reports within the next month or two. Those will be mailed out. And then as a final reminder, our fiscal year 2018 audit is complete. The Auditor of State's Office has released that report, excuse me, it can be found on their website. And we also have the CAFER and the report uploaded to the Olentangie District website as well. We received a clean audit with no management letter comments, which is incredible. A big thank you to our staff and to all of the support groups that help make sure that we are in compliance with our expenditures reporting and how we spend those funds and making sure that we stay within state laws in our budget. So we're really excited for that as well. With that, I sent an email, I think on the memo, I had a hyperlink to the Cup Report District Analysis that wasn't working maybe quite as well as I thought it had. district analysis that wasn't working maybe quite as well as I thought it had, so I emailed that to you as an Excel report, so you have that in front of you if you would like that for comparative sakes. With that, that's all we have for this meeting. Are there any questions for us?
Questions, Ms. Hatfield?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public participation?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Now we will go ahead and, Mr. Rafe, please present your superintendent action items.
Yes, sir, I will present superintendent action items A, well, A through F for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Barnes, the...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.